I want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of Community Unit District 186 on our board meeting. And before we call the roll, and we are in some very unusual times, folks. Number one, we have Annette attending via phone. Just the members of the board and the superintendent and secretary are in the boardroom. We have other rooms where people are attending. We also have an attendance, Dr. Evers, who is with the other administrators right now. So, a little bit different, and we'll just, we'll get through it. So, with that being said, Mrs. Hines, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Dorr?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Evaldi, absent. Mr. Ruggie?
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, guys. Am I sitting right there?
Yeah.
Oh, we won't, um, from that distance.
Social distance. All right, item number four is the approval of the agenda, and I understand we have quite a few changes?
Yeah, um, due to the recommendation that all non-essential items get moved to next month, we are going to be tabling a bunch of places. I just want to say that I believe next month we'll be doing, if, unless, you know, unless you're back in school and everything's great, we'll be doing a Zoom meeting. But for now, what we're tabling is all of old business, transportation contract extension, the approval of the school resource officer, and the approval of the painting is all getting tabled for next month. And under new business, I will talk a little bit about coronavirus and e-learning, and I'll be doing the approval of telephone cabling. So, we're tabling number two, three, and four, which is renewal of IHSA membership, amend the 1920 school calendar, and the 2021 school calendar. So, really, we have two items.
Just two items?
Just two items.
Okay.
Two, three, and four are tabled, right?
Two, three, and four, yes.
One and five are still there.
One and five are what we're going to be doing.
Yes.
And all of old business is tabled?
All of old business is tabled. Okay. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. So moved. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five is the approval of the consent agenda, and we are pulling the District 186 Regular Board Meeting minutes dated 2/18/2020. But the consent agenda will now consist of tri-county bills for March 2020, applications, and reports. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The pulled minutes?
Oh, um, verbatim, I talked to Shane, verbatim recordings. There's nothing wrong with them, other than we're supposed to have a summary of the minutes. And we have a YouTube, which is verbatim. And so, what we'd like to do is just keep the minutes to be summaries and not do the verbatim recordings. Approving them with the verbatim is fine. I did talk to Shane, and he said that legally, things that are said in the minutes, the reasons, don't count. He'll put minutes in front of someone and say, was this contracted, approved at a board meeting? Was it voted on? Was it acted on? Any reasons as to why the vote is yes or no doesn't get included, and so the minutes really can just be a summary. And so, I know that there's a lot of verbatim stuff in there, and we can approve it. I just don't want to, I want to make sure we're clear that we've got all the YouTube videos so we can get the verbatim stuff that way.
So, that would never, there's no point in time when that would be destroyed, or the recording that Terry would have would be destroyed? There's no legality for that?
No.
Because I know closed stuff is voted on to be destroyed after so many months.
Yeah, and, and right now YouTube is indefinite, so.
Okay.
You can't, you can't, can't destroy that YouTube.
Yeah, I just made sure. I didn't ask for a verbatim. I just pointed out that there was nothing there.
What he said was, there's nothing wrong, but there's no advantage to have the verbatim. And if you wanted to do a verbatim recording, we'd get software that would do it, and then we'd just do it that way.
Yeah, I will say most of our summaries have more than all the other agencies of minutes. I've read cities and counties. You don't know really what's going on there, our summaries.
Right, but in this particular board meeting, I mean, there was not really a summary even. Well, but when I asked Shane, I asked him, as long as I show who made the motion, who seconded it, and what we passed as presented, Shane told me that's, that was perfectly fine. All right?
So, I'll approve, or I motion to approve the minutes as presented.
In a second?
Second.
I thought you just said you were pulling them.
No, they weren't pulled out of the consent agenda, so now he's made a motion to approve them.
So, we have a motion. Did I get a second?
Shane, yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the approval of District 186 Bills for March of 2020. And I'm assuming you're going to handle that?
We're going to try. Jan is home with her mother. Her mother did get moved home. She's got hospice, so.
It's not a good situation.
It isn't. You know, thoughts and prayers for that family.
Any questions?
Give me a list of questions. I will get back to you.
Name was just on the, in between, first page and a half is all void items?
Yep, I hear.
That was due to some of the software items. The new financial program, it printed some things out, and then they had to void them. And so, there were some technicalities with that. So, in-betweens, lots of voided items.
Other questions from the board?
So, did you, because I sent Jan an email. Do you want me just to forward that to you?
That is perfect.
Okay.
But Jan will also reply to you, I'm sure.
Yeah, she had texted me and said that she was at the hospital with her mother, and I just told her to let me know by the board meeting.
All right, hearing them, then I will entertain a motion to approve the district bills as presented. So moved. Second? Misses Hines?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yeah.
Dr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mrs. Evaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Ruggie?
Yes, motion carries. Next is communications, and I think you said we had four?
Six.
Six?
Or seven, yeah.
Or seven? Okay.
Dear Mr. Navara, I regret to inform you that after much consideration, I am resigning from the head coach cheerleading position at the end of basketball season. After moving to Marion, the traveling time is too significant for practices and games. Since accepting this position of last year, I also began my RN program and would like to focus my time on studying and completing my program. I want to personally thank you for the opportunity you have given me. I enjoyed these last two years coaching at Murphysboro High School. It was a valuable experience, and I am proud of the accomplishments the cheer team has had over the last two years. I wish you well in searching for a replacement. I hope that your program continues to grow at MHS.
Who was that?
Oh, sorry, Haley Bills.
And the recommendations to approve, recommendation for resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Grody and Board of Education, please accept this letter as my formal resignation from my position as Secretary at General Johnny Logan Attendance Center effective March 13th, 2020. I sincerely apologize for the abrupt timing of this announcement. However, I must do what is best for my family. I have been presented with an amazing opportunity that will allow me to contribute more to my family and also give us a better chance to achieve all the goals we have set for our future. After careful consideration and many prayers, I have decided to accept this new position at Wright's Building Center. I feel my work will be valued and compensated fairly working for a smaller local-owned company. It has been my pleasure working for this district full-time over the last eight and a half years. Among these years, I have built lifelong friendships with amazing coworkers, watched many wonderful students learn, grow, and even transition into young adults. I will forever be grateful and cannot thank you enough for continued support. If there is anything I can do to ensure a smooth transmission, transition of my responsibilities, please let me know. Sincerely, Amanda Tuller.
Recommendations to approve for resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Murphysboro School Board, please accept this letter as my formal notice of resignation. I have enjoyed working as a lunchroom monitor at General Johnny Logan Attendance Center this year and last year. We have had some of the best students in the world. My last day will be March 10th, 2020. Thank you very much for this opportunity to work here. Sincerely, Robin Tuller.
And the recommendation is to approve her resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To Superintendent Grody and Murphysboro District School Board, this letter is to inform you that I, Valerie Potmas, am resigning at the end of this school year. I am looking for a career that is closer to home. I am greatly appreciative of the opportunity given me to work at the General Johnny Logan Attendance Center for my first two years of teaching. On a personal note, I want to say that there is great sense of community in my school and especially in the first-grade wing. They welcomed me with open arms, answered so many questions for me, and offered a tremendous amount of professional and personal support. This team and also others, such as Carla Aylers, Brendan McDaniel, Melinda Pearson, and so many others, went out of their way to show me that they care for me, not just as a teacher, but as a human being. I cannot thank them enough for their kindness and friendship. I will miss them greatly, but I need to make this change. Sincerely, Valerie Potmas.
And the recommendation is to accept her resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Stroud, Athletic Director, please accept this letter that I will be resigning from the Boys and Girls Assistant Track Coaching Position for the upcoming 2020 season. Thank you for the support and the opportunity to coach track and field over the course of the last season. If I can do anything to help with the transition and make things smoother for the incoming coach, feel free to contact me, and I will be more than willing to help out and do whatever it takes to make sure that the transition goes smoothly. Sincerely, Amy Raphael.
And the recommendation is to accept her resignation.
I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
So moved.
In a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Murphy Carroll Board of Education, please accept my resignation from my position as a resource teacher at Crowthers Elementary following the end of the school year. I have very much enjoyed working at Crowthers over the past few years. I will miss the wonderful students, teachers, and staff I have become friends with during my time here. I have been offered another position out of state and cannot continue my career at Crowthers Elementary. I appreciate the opportunities this school has provided me, as well as the guidance and support that has allowed me to grow within my position. Sincerely, Jessica Coleman.
And the recommendation is to accept her resignation.
And I will entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. So moved. Second?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear Mr. Chris Grody, I'm writing to inform you of my resignation of my fifth-grade position at Crowthers Elementary at the end of 2019-2020 school year in order to pursue employment at another school district. I would like to thank the district for the opportunities it has, it has provided through my employment. I would like to personally thank Mr. Todd for his guidance and leadership as a building principal. His dedication to his staff and students was a great inspiration, and he made our team stronger. I would like to also thank the wonderful teachers and staff at Crowthers Elementary. The relationships that were developed will always be remembered and cherished. I will never forget the memories made, the lessons I have learned, and the friendships developed over the past two years. Thank you again for the opportunity, and I wish the district the best of luck in the future. Sincerely, Lucas Giacomo.
And the recommendation is to approve his resignation.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve that recommendation. So moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it? Right. Next is fishbowl items, and I think I saw some.
I'll go.
Yeah.
Amy Hoppstedt and Sherri Shim, fourth-grade teachers at Crowthers, wrote and received a grant from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. This grant, the Illinois Biodiversity Field Trip Grant, totaled $2,310.81. This money will be used to fund a field trip to touch of nature for all fourth-grade students in May of 2020. The money will cover the cost of bus transportation and admission fees for each student.
Thank you.
This is from Andrea Geis. I want to give Georgia Marshall and the entire kitchen staff of District 186 a big hug for all the work that they have done to get the meals ready for our students during this difficult time. In a very short period of time, they designated multiple grab-and-go sites around town, as well as a delivery system to reach students who couldn't make it to the fixed sites. Thank you for all the love you give to the students of District 186. You guys are the absolute best. X's and O's, Andrea Geis.
And I believe we delivered 600 today?
Yeah, we handed out over 600 meals.
That's pretty good.
Which is just outstanding.
It is.
And the, I was going to say at the end, but I'll say it now. The last couple of weeks, as we've gone through this unprecedented time, watching the office staff, the teachers, everybody just come together and do what we need to do for this community has just been amazing. I mean, even the coordination that Steve and Terry did today to get this meeting orchestrated like this, it's just the details, the packets that got mailed home for the kids to do work, the 600 meals that we're feeding. The dedication has just been rewarding to see.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You go on?
Yes, okay. This is from Matt Todd. Dear Board, I'm excited to share the following data with you and highlight the outstanding job that Crowthers Elementary staff are doing. Two graphs highlight the progress that has been achieved as we build capacity and improve our implementation of PBIS program at Crowthers. The PBIS team and staff have worked hard to make sure we are increasing the fidelity of PBIS efforts in all tiers. Tier one represents our universal PBS programs, supports, interventions, and activities that are implemented schoolwide and promote positive behavior. Tier two represents additional interventions and supports for students who are struggling or at risk due to behavioral challenges. Tier three represents positive interventions and supports, support for the students who struggle the most and are in need of individualized interventions for chronic behavior challenges. As you can see, Crowthers has made great strides. As a result, you will notice that the number of behavioral outbursts, as documented by referrals, has decreased significantly. As we all know, less interruptions and instruction will lead to higher academic outcomes because students are engaged in learning activities. I'm excited about what our staff has accomplished, how well our students have responded, and what the future holds. There are two supporting graphs.
Want to pass that around? Mr. Beavers?
I have one from Stacy Hickam. The awesome students at Crowthers have raised $1,184.17 for the American Heart Association through the Kid's Heart Challenge. Outstanding. Stacy, here.
Okay. Item nine is Freedom of Information Act request, and it looks like we had two?
We had two. Let me get to that page. Charlie Ferguson with Local 773 requested salaries of all clerical employees, nurses, librarians, media aides, food service employees, all employees in the unit office, salaries of the IT department payroll, receptionists, and any other employees in the unit office. Salaries to include hourly and yearly, and whether or not insurance was offered, pension benefits, et cetera. We responded to that in timely manner, if this.
What, with who, what agency was that?
Local 773. And then Vince Espinoza requested copies of the high schools' grading scales for all district high schools. And so, I'm assuming this is somebody from another part of the state that doesn't realize we only have one high school. And so, it was a general FOIA to everybody, and they're going to collect what the grading scales are for some reason. But it was responded to in a timely manner.
Right. Item number 10 is the recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, each discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Now, this is a little different, so first, I'm not sure if we have...
Where's Annette?
Mr. Tripp is kind of spearheading. All right, over here, Ms. Russell, state your name.
Hi, my name is Katie Russell, and I work at the middle school. So, I just wanted to talk to you about the number of teachers that are not having their contracts renewed this evening. I'm aware of four, although I do know that one resigned. I believe that this is the highest number of teachers that we have not renewed since I was hired in this district. I have a real concern in letting this many teachers go amidst a teacher shortage in Illinois. According to ISB, the statewide shortage of teachers is projected to hit 20,000 statewide by 2025. In a January article for the Southern Illinoisan about the shortage of special education teachers in particular, David Ardre...
How can you go on a second? What?
Annette?
Did you say something, Annette?
I think she said something, something's going out, maybe the microphone.
Can you move over here and look at it and see if Annette's teleported to a different land?
Sorry. Oh, no, that's fine.
Can you hear me, Annette?
Yeah, I missed some of that.
Okay, I'm going to move the phone a little closer to her for this part.
Thanks.
There we go. Now you're facing her. Good, sorry.
All right. So, David Ardre, which is the Executive Director of the Association of Illinois Rural and Small Schools, said that this won't be solved in one, two, or three years. With the number of retirements and turnover, we're looking at five to eight years down the road, still struggling to fill shortages in schools. The university could fill its teacher preparation programs, and we still wouldn't fill all the open positions that we have. I believe that you, as a school board, need to be asking our administration if they have done their due diligence in guiding and mentoring these new teachers, and if they've attempted to remediate any unsatisfactory areas of their performance. In talking with three of the teachers, it came to my attention that they had never had a discussion with their administrator, crying to being told that they were not being renewed about the reason they were told they were not being rehired. Issues that came, issues that had not come up in prior evaluations. While I certainly do not know the conversations that they've had or not had with their administrator, I hope that you're willing to ask the administrators if they have taken reasonable steps to remediate these issues, and if these issues are truly unable to be remediated. I also think we need to make sure that we have a robust mentor program in every building where the mentor and mentee teachers are given adequate time to work together. The sheer number of teachers leads me to believe that we need to take a hard look at what we're doing in this district to support new teachers.
Thank you.
Thanks. Have a good thing. Wash your hands.
Kimberly Bryan's coming in next.
Is there any one of those meetings where we slowly wanted to time walk out and disappear? Is it?
You're a haunted movie? Outstanding. Let me see, Mr. Tripp. I need for you to state your name, too.
My name is Brian Tripp, and I am here on behalf of the MEA to read a letter from members of our association to the Board of Education. I just wanted to inform you of all the positive things going on at Crowthers Elementary School. Like always, the old saying still rings true today. The squeaky wheels get the most attention. However, I would caution you against being quick to listen to these wheels. Volume does not equal truth. There are so many positive things going on in our school. Thank you to Mrs. Evaldi, who came and spent the day in our building this past month. She was able to help my students with hands-on science by creating steam tables. We had a lot of fun, and the students, my aide, and myself greatly enjoyed her being there. Thank you. We have seen a drastic improvement in our building of positive behavior supports and efforts. In my small classroom alone, I have two students who have never been able to attend a PBIS reward party in the four years of their education at Murphysboro because they were always frequent flyers in the areas of ODRs or office referrals. Because of the positive influence and encouragement in our morning announcements, consistent reinforcement of expectations, conferencing with students, and out of the blue rewards, both of these students will be able to attend their very first PBIS reward party and have not received an ODR since the fall. Both students are still meeting their check-in, check-out goals daily. There are many more students in our building that our efforts have positively impacted in a similar manner. We have implemented team huddles in our classroom to social and emotional skills to all students, not just to those in crisis. We have, again, seen great growth in the area of student emotional intelligence. All of my students have greatly benefited from these lessons as we focus our efforts schoolwide on social and emotional resilience and thinking. As a result of all the positive behavior efforts, our academics have improved. As stated before, the issue was never curriculum and instruction in our building. It was student behavior management. Mrs. Hanson and our specials team put on a spectacular musical performance with our fourth-grade students this past week. We, as teachers, were astounded at their verbal expression in speaking parts, excitement about the musical and the parent attendance. We have had more parent involvement in our school events in the past two years than I've ever seen. Our fourth-grade team was able to write a grant for biodiversity grant through the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. We just recently received news that we will receive the grant. We are now in close contact with the IDNR to get a field trip scheduled for our students that will be impactful, rich learning experience for our kids. There are so many positive things going on in our building. With the exception of a handful, the camaraderie, the community among the teachers and the staff has been rebuilt. We are becoming a family again after years of work and difficulties. It is a breath of fresh air. I look forward to being able to share my many more positives with you from our building in the future. Sincerely, Becky McMillian, Crowthers Fourth Grade.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Brian, just to clarify, you, sorry, you said letter for the members, but that was just from Becky.
That was actually from, yeah.
Okay.
As MEA, yeah, that was from Becky.
Thank you.
Will you do the last one?
That is the last one, yes.
Okay. All right. Then moving past old business into new business, first item is the coronavirus and e-learning.
Yeah. They, they, this has been quite the flux of rules and regulations. It started off about two weeks ago with wide sweeping changes that were going to be relaxed for the e-learning process. Those have slowly kind of been whittled back. I've talked with the MEA. They don't support it. Right now, for Murphysboro, I don't necessarily support the e-learning either. We have too many families without technology, without internet. Steve and I had a conversation today even at, you know, do you provide e-learning for those that can access it and increase the gap? Or do you, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of equity issues, a lot of fairness issues. My, people my age might remember rural free delivery when the people in the farms finally got the post office services brought to their houses. I think there's going to need to be a need for Wi-Fi free delivery. I think that, you know, they're going to have to expand their infrastructures for moments like this where they're going to be quarantined because there's a lot of kids that do not have technology. The 17th through the 30th are act of God days. We would return, if there's nothing added to this, on the 31st. That's a Tuesday. There were a lot of districts that misunderstood that. We thought we were returning on the 30th. He said, the governor said the 17th through the 27th, returning on the 30th, but really what he meant was the 30th is, it's the 17th through the 30th, because that is 14 days. There's a lot of conjecture. I'm betting that he's going to extend it. What was it, Kansas, that just closed there for the rest of the year?
Where?
Kansas.
Oh, the entire state.
The entire state has closed schools for the rest of the year. What we do with graduation, what we do with our calendars, whether or not...
Annette, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whether or not we're going to have to make up these days, you know, and that's why the calendars are being tabled because the start of next year might be postponed if we have to work over the summers. I don't think that's going to happen. However, there's a lot of times I don't think something should happen, and we have to deal with it. So, I will say that we did Meals on Wheels started today. A bunch of people volunteered and have contacted Georgia on that. We had a phone call from a family that was on the other side of 13 over by, because we went to New Horizons.
It was on, it was past Sergio's down towards the president.
Terry called Georgia, and Georgia said, all right, I'm going to the kitchen. I'm filling up a cooler, and I'll go there. And so, now they're adding that section. So, you know, we put on the Facebook, if you get left out, let us know, and we'll add it. And so, she ran out there tonight. She handed them a bunch of meals, and...
She actually told her to go outside and tell all the neighbors, and she would be there in 20 minutes.
Yeah, and I mean, that's just, it's been beautiful to watch. And as we get these bumps, they're going to get worked out. Mrs. Schinkie sent an email to her faculty today. She was one of the people driving around in the white, small bus handing out things, and kids were excited to see her. It was just... Kids are missing not being in school. It's a terrible situation we're in. Handouts and packets are being mailed home today, those that didn't get picked up. U.S. Department of Ed... U.S. Department of Ed is currently creating waivers for state assessments, that news just came out today. Whether or not our state will get a waiver, what does that mean with our waivers? I will tell you, I sent out an email yesterday, I think, to the paracommittee. The paracommittee is our Performance Evaluation Reform Act Committee. It's the teachers and the administration that comes together, and the association shared with me their concerns that the SLOs, the Student Learning Objectives, if the kids come back and they do a post-assessment, they're not gonna see the same kind of growth, and we're gonna need to make modifications for that. Those are in very broad strokes, some of the big picture items that need to be figured out. E-learning is hard for our district because of our geographic footprint and our situation.
Well, and the library closed, too. So if a student were to go, wanna go to the library, they...
Has the library closed completely?
They're doing curbside only.
Yeah.
Okay, so you can still get books at the library.
No internet.
Call them. Yeah, and so...
Is the youth center open? Does anybody know? I don't, oh, I don't know about our youth center. I know, like, I don't think the Boys and Girls Club is not.
Boys and Girls Club, so I would say ours is not open.
I don't know.
I can't imagine that it is.
And so, I mean, these are really just unprecedented times. We're gonna keep rolling with punches and doing what's best for our families and our community, and if there's any concerns, comments, questions that you get, just please let me know, and we'll try to address it as quickly and as readily as we can.
I actually have two.
Okay.
One has been IEP meetings.
The IEP meetings, we've been talking about that today. Meetings, according to the Illinois Department, the ISBE, the Board, the meetings need to happen in a timely fashion. We have 11 students that need to have IEP meetings in the next three weeks. And so tomorrow, I'm gonna be spending a lot of time figuring that one out. The services for the kids is a little less, what it seems now, as I read through the stuff, and again, this is me reading and me thinking, but it seems like since students, these are act of God days, the special ed services won't need to be made up either, because everybody's not getting the same stuff.
Right, the minutes and stuff.
I will tell you that for summer school, when you look at a student with special ed needs and whether or not they need summer school, you look at over the summer, how much would they regress, and would they regress more than what they would grow in a year? And that's why you wanna do summer schools, to mitigate that. We might have a larger group of students that need summer school with our special ed because of that. I don't, I don't know.
Or summer services.
What was the, yeah, but for the IEP meetings, that's working on tomorrow. What was your other one?
The other one was graduation. So what do we have students that, part of their requirements to meet for graduation are that this fourth quarter, our fourth quarter just started?
Yeah.
So what do we do for those students?
That's another question. There's, Daniel Booth is actually a representative of Southern Illinois for the Illinois SWAT Team, is what it's called. And so we've got a shared spreadsheet, we put these questions in. That is an excellent question that we're looking at. You know, if we're closed for the rest of the year, do we graduate the kids? And if so, then those fourth-quarter kids that need to pass the government test would need to be waived. Will that happen? You know, I don't know. And so that's, graduation and another one's gonna be one of those things that in a couple of weeks, we're gonna need to start working out. But if they close us for the rest of the year, I know that our professional organization, and I think the IEA and all the other ones would support that, is the requirements for graduation are gonna need to be waived. We're just gonna have to graduate these kids.
Well, then, like, even prom, when's the last possible day that you can tell people and get money back and, you know, before things are money's spent and things like that?
What we found, like with the band trip, the high school band trip, we, I believe, got almost all of the money back. And that's because the places are completely understanding this is a different time. And, you know, and so I think that a lot of places are reimbursing. The problem with that is those businesses that have these places need that money to pay their employees and to stay open. I mean, SMB Burger has closed, I don't think they're gonna reopen.
No, they're not.
And so we're already starting to see the economic downturn. Cody Ellemeyer and I have been meeting the other day, said something that I thought was wise, and I ordered some pizza last night, it was very tasty, but he said, you know, if we don't order out for these businesses that are trying to do it at least once a week, we're doing a disservice. And I agree with that, and so...
Especially local businesses. Like Walmart's gonna survive, Kroger will survive, the local businesses, as you know, they're gonna hurt.
They're gonna, they're gonna survive, but their employees won't, because as their business goes down, it's the employees are gonna get it first. So, I mean, it's, it's just a vicious circle for everybody.
Depends on if they own a building or not, though, too.
I'm sorry?
Because as people move out of the buildings and they can't pay the rents on the buildings, the people that own the buildings, if they don't own them outright, have mortgages to pay, you know? It's just, it's vicious circle right now. So IEPs and graduations were the two?
Yeah, that's the calls I've gotten, or texts and messages I've gotten the most.
As a graduating senior in my family, I, you know, he actually said, "Isn't that ironic?" Because he didn't wanna walk across the stage for graduation, and his wife, my wife, his mother almost killed him. He was gonna, he was planning to walk, and he just said, "Do you see the irony in this?" So, he might get his way, who knows?
Okay. Thank you. And then the last item is the approval of the telephone cabling and network cabinet warrant for the middle school.
Yeah, and we talked about whether or not we needed to leave this on. Painting, we took off because we're gonna do that work over the summer. Burke Electric would like to, if this is approved, would like to get in there next week while we've got some kids out to get ahead of the job. And we'd like to get them in there next week to get ahead of the job, because depending on the school year, there's gonna be some jobs that are, I mean, this summer's gonna be a little bit crazy if we extend or don't extend, so. Steve, I think Steve wants to come in and talk a little bit about that, or can answer the questions on the cabling and stuff.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. So, questions, concerns, comments on that? The recommendation is to approve the...
Any questions from the Board?
The only thing, was this a, we went out for bid on this, or since it's two separate things?
We didn't actually go out to bid, because it's gonna be below the bid threshold of $50,000, so I received two quotes. I showed, I think you got copies of those quotes, I'm not sure, or Terry may have written up the totals.